Good evening. Welcome to our work session for September the ninth, 2024. We have about three agenda items to discuss tonight in our work session. And we'll start with ordinance 2024-07, "To authorize the conveyance of any and all interest in certain real property in city easily located at 106 Wysswell Road."
We have an amendment in front of us or an agreement that I just now got?
Yes, sir.
Is there a restriction in there somewhere?
It's on the very back.
Mayor Maye?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hughes. Second line which restricts the use of the property to prohibit, perhaps the use of the property for, to make it clear that it's prohibited? Or restricts the use of property against, use for? To make it clear that it prohibits it or restricts it against that use?
That's fine. I like that word choice better.
Thank you, Peter.
So if we want to, on the second line, replace the word restricts with prohibits, the intent is still the same, but I do like that language better.
Then does the last sentence need to be changed as well? Because it says then the restriction shall be modified as amended.
That's fine. We can change that to prohibition rather than restriction.
You mean still a restriction?
Yes.
Still a restriction.
So what's the difference of you wanting to change prohibit, I mean restricts to prohibit?
Restriction is a general term and prohibit would be more specific.
Specific, okay, thank you. So the only change we're going to make is prohibits?
That's my only suggestion.
Okay.
So we can, can we, does it have to be vote voted to be amended or we can?
No, we, what you can do, we can do, Mayor, is tonight, we can strike through and write prohibits on the version that you have in front of you. You'll initial that and Mr. Wilson will initial that change on the final contract and that'll be, that'll be fine. So what you're going to be voting on tonight will be that, that restriction will have that one word change in it.
Any other questions or discussion about this particular? Do we know, Mr. Wilson?
I do not know, ma'am.
That's okay too. As long as council approves it, he can sign it tomorrow.
Anything else on this? Okay. Move to the second agenda item then, ordinance 2024-08, "To amend section 30.08 of Title III of the easily city codes." Any discussion or explanation?
I believe I understand the import of this, but could you just speak to kind of the purpose of what you think you want the change is?
Mr. Hughes.
Just go ahead and bring your chair.
Yeah, no, well, I don't think this podium will accommodate a chair. So I took a look at this ordinance fairly recently. State law provides that, that mayor and councilor in totter receive the payment for actual expenses incurred. And the way that our ordinance was drafted concerned me because it provided a set amount of expenses to be paid per month regardless of whether or not they were incurred or not. So the suggestion or the proposed ordinance before council this evening is to fix that issue by providing that the salaries remain the same that are set forth by ordinance, but the expenses would be modified to those that are actually incurred by council rather than a set amount. And that would be in compliance with state law.
Any questions or discussion?
Mayor Talbott, another question came up concerning expenses in early 2022. I think the question was whether we were paid a gross amount or a net amount. Council reviewed it. We revised the ordinance. It was submitted to the State Ethics Commission, which approved it. And here we are doing something similar again. I propose that we combine the salary and the reimbursement for expenses into one gross lump sum, which would not distinguish between salary and expenses. So we don't have to come back and revisit this again. If we do that, I submit that that meets the wording and requirements from the March 2022 ethics opinion from the Ethics Commission, which approved the change then, saying that there was no economic interest present because no council member will gain anything from the vote. And goes on to say, assuming that that passed, there would not, there would not be any additional financial benefit that would accrue other than what was already being paid. So I submit that that meets that requirement as far as an economic interest and submit that it would also meet the same requirement about increasing pay. And that could only be, go into effect after the next election. But if the end result is the, there's no additional benefit, then I submit that that could go into effect now. And if not, then maybe we need another opinion from the Ethics Commission. I'm trying to simplify it.
If I may address that. So the statute that I'm referencing, 57170, the only concern I have with that suggestion is it says that an ordinance establishing or increasing such salaries shall not become effective until after commencement date. So if we, if we, if we take your suggestion and increase the salary to equal the set amount that you're still getting now, I think that would be an increase in salary that would not go into effect until the next election. So if council was inclined to do so, you could, we could do the ordinance with Jim's suggestion to strike the language regarding the payment of set amount expenses regardless if they're actually incurred and increase the salary, but the increase in salary would not take place until November of 2025, I believe. So you could combine what I've presented plus what you want, what you're suggesting into one ordinance, rather than doing it one now and then later if council wanted to, what they're receiving for money.
And I have a question. If we're being paid Z now and Z is X plus Y, but now we're going to be paid Z, is that an increase?
Well, I see your point. The ordinance would say, it's iffy. I, I, I've never dealt with that issue before. It's just.
Me neither.
I bet, I've never had an ordinance that specified payment of expenses regardless of, or net amount expenses or whatever. It's just whatever you incur and usually set forth in some policy council adopts. This, these are the expenses that are, that council is able to be reimbursed based on production of actual receipts. And if I, if I had my preference, I would get out of the net amount after taxes and just pay a salary plus whatever expenses you incur. And that'd be it. I think that's simpler for everybody.
Is that, is that what was done in 2022?
The question then, I believe, was, you know, we're, the gross or the net or the whatever. And we changed it to whatever we. But, but that resulted.
The, it was, the wording was changed to match the practice that had been implemented in 2018. So it was brought up to date, but in your question, or excuse me, in what you read about the expenses, whether incurred or not, did I hear you correctly?
That's the way your ordinance is currently drafted.
Okay, so whether we incurred or not, you still get paid the hundred dollars for the expenses, correct?
But the issue with that is that state law says you actually have to incur the expense before you get paid expense. So if I get a hundred bucks a month and I don't have any expenses, that would not be in compliance with state law.
Okay. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that the Attorney General's opinion has come out about three or four times on this particular subject. And each one of them, he says you cannot pay like a per diem. It has to be incurred expenses, like he said.
I don't dispute the wording of that particular state code section. It's pretty clear.
Any other discussion?
Oh, yeah, I have a, I have an issue with one and two. It states that payment for actual expenses incurred in the performance of his or her official duties within limitations prescribed by ordinance upon submission. And that same statement is for the council member. Where in the ordinance does it state what the limitation is?
I don't believe there are any. That is right out of the state code.
I mean, are we going to still stay with 300 for mayor and 100 for council?
That's up to.
I mean, max, maximum amount.
I mean, that, that's up to y'all. I mean, you, councils adjust salaries periodically?
Well, it, to maybe clarify your question, let's say that we adopted the ordinance as, as presented, would there then be a cap on the, with the hundred dollar and 300 dollar? That wouldn't have any more bearing. I mean, it could be five dollars, it could be 800 dollars, right?
Yeah. Well, what, but whatever your, if you incurred an expense as a council member and you'd have to show proof to the finance director or whoever, and they would, you could be reimbursed that money. So typically, you've got a policy established on what's reimbursable. So there may need to be some adjustment there for council going forward. So you know what am I going to be reimbursed for?
And that, your, is it my understanding that that's not currently in place? That we don't actually have something?
I'm not aware of any policy for reimbursement. If I stop by City Hall on my way home for lunch, can I claim mileage?
Good question.
Well, and I.
And this would simplify that.
I wasn't here in the historical legislating of the, this twice previously, but my understanding from city employees is this is one of the reasons that it ended up being what it is is because of just questions like this is, it's just so complicated and complex. And it's just easier to say, take this, buy your gas with it, don't call us back.
And of course, we want to comply with state law. We have to, we want to, we will.
Yep.
Well, could we not change the wording to put in, instead of limitations prescribed by ordinance, up to a maximum of 300 or 100 for the council like it is now?
Of expenses actually incurred?
Yes.
That would be permissible?
What about the possibility, since there seems to be so many questions on this, that perhaps for this evening, we could table this until we get, because it sounds like there may be a number of questions from different council members. And I think it would be appropriate for them to be able to submit their questions to our administrator. And he may know the answers to some of them. If there are some that are still outstanding, then they could be directed to Mr. Hughes. So that, because it sounds like, it sounds as if there's just still a little ambiguity amongst people and trying to understand what we can do, what we can't do. And so before we vote on an ordinance, we don't know what we can do or we can't do, I think it would be important for us to, let's sort the entire procedure out and then proceed with finalizing the ordinance. I disagree, I'm sorry. I would prefer this be an entire discussion among all of the council members because somebody's question is probably going to raise another question by someone else. And when you're trying to do this by email, it gets quite lengthy.
May I ask something? How long, you've been here, Jim? How long have you been on city council?
I forget.
20 years? Have you ever gotten reimbursed for having expenses? So far, I've not witnessed anything that would happen expense.
Yes.
You've gone to Columbia or something like that?
Municipal association was in Charleston. You get mileage and a per diem on that, but you know, there was a.
You haven't done that many times.
Not, not lately, but there was a worksheet that I could produce to fill out mileage, per diem, with an allowance for breakfast, lunch, and supper. But I haven't done that lately.
Where I'm going with this is, I don't think any of us got into this for money. We didn't do this for money. Wouldn't it simplify things? So I've been here now for nine months. I haven't had any expenses. Wouldn't it be more simple to throw the expenses out the window and just pay everybody seven or eight or nine or a thousand, two thousand, whatever? And you eat your expense.
I think that's what, I think that's what Mr. Hughes just said because in the language, and I understand what Mr. Robinson is saying, but according to state law, and I might mess this up, that's why.
That's okay.
Is when you're taking the designation of 100 dollars or whatever the amount that is currently in our ordinance as an expense, and you're adding that to changing the amount of the salary, then that is a, a change which could not take effect until after the next election.
I understand that, which would be all right, you know.
But in the.
I would survive without that.
But in the meantime, but in the meantime, it has to be sorted out.
Right. But it would be more simple than just to say, we will give you this and you pay your own expenses to Charleston.
Which is what we've been doing.
That's what we've been doing.
That's what.
Right.
That was the intent, I believe.
No, you're making it too complicated.
But then go back and look at the March 2022 ethics opinion and would this change comply with at least the spirit of that? And you, you used the word iffy?
Yeah. And the issue with the state ethics opinion was it wasn't actually addressing this particular question.
Correct.
And so it's a, it's a little bit of apples and oranges in terms of what their opinion was. I, in terms of reviewing this issue, I don't place a whole lot of weight into that state ethics opinion. Yeah, there's any number of ways you could approach it. We do need to deal with our ordinance at some point. And it may, it may be some more discussion by council and that's fine too.
And we, we will comply with state law, but we also have more pressing matters.
Okay. So we ready to move on to the next agenda item? Ordinance 2024-09, "To amend fiscal year 2425 operating budget to authorize purchase agreement for a ladder truck for Easy Fire Department." Are we going to have Chief Owen speak to the council about the?
Yes, ma'am. If you remember back when we presented the budget, we talked about the fire truck. We talked about how much it was, approximately $3 million. And we were trying to get a million dollar grant to go toward that. And we told you we're going to come back to you. When we had everything in place and asked for this, and that's why we're here. The million dollar grant fell through, that we didn't qualify for that. So we had to fund the whole thing. We had, we had, we had a fire truck ordered and we replaced that fire truck. This is a different one, not the 3 million dollar one. We had a fire truck ordered, it was a Woods truck, and we decided not to get that one. We got a cheaper one, so that left a deposit of approximately 222,000 dollars with the company that we ordered the fire truck from. We're going to use that as part of this down payment toward the fire truck if y'all approve it tonight. And Chief Owen's going to explain some other reasons why we need it now and really don't need to wait.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor, council, the, as the administrator mentioned, we did try to look at the, what it was called was a community development block grant. That grant is actually for, if a community is in need of a platform ladder truck and they don't have one, if they purchase it, it improves their ISO community wide. It's to, it's to help the community wide. But across the board, in this case, we would be replacing one, so it would not apply to our circumstances. So that's, that's where the grant went. We currently have a 1993 95-foot platform and a 2005 75-foot platform. We would actually be replacing the 93. And some things to keep in mind is, is the things that we have to, to take into consideration when we purchase these. One thing ISO requires, if, if a town or municipality has five buildings that are either three stories, 35 feet in height, or require a 3,500 gallon per minute water flow, they have to have a aerial device. And that's where we fall into place that we need, need these through ISO requirements. The, the fact that if we, if we order this right now, it will be 43 to 48 months before we get it. Be almost four years before we receive this truck. The, the, if we sign the contract tomorrow, it will be four years almost from that point. At that point, our 1993 platform will be 35 years old. So it's a period of time. And that's the way it is everywhere with, with every manufacturer right now. I mean, it's taken a long period of time to get these, these apparatus. So the sooner we can, if possible, the better, better we'll be. I will say this, there are also, as these fire apparatus become older, it's harder to get parts. We, we recently had a situation where we had a valve, and I won't get into the technical part of it, but a valve that went bad that, that we thought we were going to have to actually change the valve and replace with another valve, which was going to be an expense that we would incur that we had, we hoped we wouldn't have to. Eventually, we found out we were able to rebuild the one we had. They were able to find the, a rebuild kit for it eventually. Thank goodness. But it's just getting to a point where it, it, it amazes me that parts are getting to the point where we cannot make repairs that we need to sometimes anymore. So something else to keep in mind, as they get older, you're just not able to get those parts or have to replace them with something new. Therefore, we incur that expense for a new part to replace it with. The other thing I will say is, is as the administrator mentioned, I have a proposal that came back from the company. The proposal was at 2.9 million. Well, actually right at three. It was 2, 2,996,740 dollars. With the credit, the trade-in amount that we had from the Wildland Urban Interface Truck that we've, we've changed at this point. And then a prepay amount that is subtracted off of that of 260,000. Our final cost for the apparatus and equipment would be 2,513,750 dollars. Now, with that in mind, in October, there will be a 5% increase on the cost. So we're looking at a possible, if we don't go ahead and start the purchase process, we're looking at possibly having 150,000 extra dollars to pay just at that point. It usually happens twice a year. I can't say that it would, would again, but I do know that they're, they're telling me that the company will implement a 5% increase at the end of October. Do you have any questions at this time?
Do, does easily currently have that five buildings that?
Yes, yes, we multiple, multiples. I don't know how ISO looks at it. It, it basically looks at it as, we have multiple buildings that meet that requirement. And at this point, if we replace the 93, basically the 05 would be a reserve, which would be a backup. Right now, the 93 is a backup to our 2005.
So are we currently getting a penalty for not having?
No, we are not. No, we're actually receiving the points that we need, that are necessary through ISO, which is the insurance cost. But I don't want us to get to a point where we don't have those in place. And, and of course, as y'all will know, as we go forward, the later it gets, the more expensive it's going to be and so forth. It's a, it's a, it's a 30-year investment. I mean, you, you, you can tell, you know, we're, we're looking at a truck that, that's, it's, but it's 31 years old now that we're going to replace. So that's, that's what we would be looking at.
So what was the amount of the down payment that you need?
So as far as what we are actually placing with it right now is the, we're getting actually a 260,000 dollar prepaid subtracted off of it. And then we also have 222,990 dollars that will come off of the Wildland truck that we actually canceled the order of, that will go toward the platform. And just to, to give you the information, we had purchased a Wildland Urban Interface Truck, which is, was an off-road four-wheel-drive, bigger brush truck, basically, for 450,000. We went back to the drawing board and decided not to utilize that and actually purchase a smaller vehicle, which is costing us 218, around that, which was what left us the 222 to put on the platform or to apply toward the platform truck.
I think I understand you. So in essence, the 222,990, is that money that's already been allocated? We're just moving it into this budget?
That's correct.
It's not additional money?
That's correct. It's been allocated. It's, it's actually, we've actually paid that for that other truck.
Okay.
But in the process of evaluating what we really needed, we actually changed bought something cheaper and had that money left to apply toward.
Our source of funding?
Mr. Hurd, Ralph, back there? There you are.
There you are. Ralph's got some funding numbers here for us. Let you chew on.
We'll be doing RFP to get funding on this. There is a vendor that the company that's manufacturing the truck works with, and they've given us some preliminary numbers. So if we were looking at 15 years with a payment next year, it'd be 242,000 for the year. If we skip next year and do a payment two years out, it'd be 254,000 a year. And also, from our debt service schedule, next year, we will have an 88,000 dollar payment drop-off. Two years, we'll have a 51,000 dollar payment drop-off, and when I say payment, it's payment and interest. And within three years, we'll have an additional 275,000 dollars worth of payments drop off our debt schedule. But the financing would be subject to RFP, a request for funding.
So the seller of the fire truck has got financing methods available?
They do, but we have to go through the process of going out to bid to get numbers, and then we could still select them if they're the best option. So those are preliminary numbers they gave us.
So this 2.6 million, whatever we do, that's not to exceed that amount, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, those, those numbers there, the percentage rate there and the term and the 2.6 were numbers given to us from our bonding attorneys that said that we could probably beat that rate for sure, but put that number in there just to make sure.
Do we even know how much money we've got? I don't know if this is time to bring this up, but we haven't gotten the audit back in 22, 23 yet, have we?
No, sir, we have not.
That audit was supposed, wasn't supposed to have been done before this year budget was?
Yes.
Don't we usually get it in October?
Before the new year?
October?
I know they're real close. Ralph has been working with them on a daily basis, getting everything tied up, and I know that they're at the very end of it, so anytime now, we're going to get the audit.
We might have a lot of money. You just don't know. Or might not have, you know.
Any more discussion, any more questions for Mr. Hurd or Chief Owen?
No, thank you both.
Do we have any more project updates?
Yes, ma'am. Mario Pietro's going to give us an update on a grant he received for streets.
We did receive a grant for 120,000 dollars with 30,000 dollars that we have to put into it, but that can be put into as work that performed by the, by city. So that's to, for, get a proposal to review our city roadway system for safe streets, try to make them safer. So it's 130, 120,000 dollars plus our 30,000 matching. We have the ability to do traffic counts, we have the ability to use all the equipment to help, even though 30,000 dollars is not.
And my understanding is, once we get that report back from the folks doing the Safe Street Study, they'll, they identify areas that are, that need, need work, need improvement for, then we can go back out for more grants to actually improve that, is that correct?
Correct. The company that helped us out was Kinley Horn to get, help get that grant. Well, we have to open it up to other companies, so we'll do an IRFQ, excuse me, RFP for that.
Okay.
We also have an update on the Prescott Greenway, we paved the majority of it. There's one more section we need to get a, we'll change order for, to finish it off, and Chrisman can figure out what day she wants to have a grant opening, if she wants to have a grant opening.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mario. And Eddie?
Mayor and council, and Tom wanted me to give you an update on the word we got from Pickens County Landfield about glass recycling is going to be phased out by them, by us taking it up there. If you live in the county, you can drop your recycled glass off at the main landfill, which is listed, addressed at 2053 Old Liberty Road. They did receive a grant for about 30, 32 or 34,000 dollars, but it's got like a pulverizing machine, but you put like one piece of material in it at a time, and it's just going to be painstakingly long to get that stuff used up, and they've got about 700 tons on their yard right now as we speak, but they have a lot of stuff on their Facebook page and their website, and if anybody has any problem or questions, feel free to ask me, but this is not the first time we've done this. I found one of our old bins last week, and it said, no glass, of May 1st to 26th, so that was on when we were still picking the bins up from the side of the road, so it's almost eight years ago, but we were notified by them that they would not be, we couldn't take ours, and we take, we fill that 20, that's a 20-yard container, and that thing is about, about six, six and a half tons will go up there, and we usually take it up there about once every, I don't know, five, six months. I think we've taken it twice so far this year.
Okay, so effective today?
As of, yes, ma'am, today.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
We will be taking that container up there, but it will be one in the construction and demo section of the landfill, and then they're saying that you can still bring some of your home bottles and stuff up there, but that will go into that little machine, and they're going to try to use that glass dust to fill in some cracks on their roadways or pothole, small potholes up there at the landfill, so they're still trying to use it for something, but we've been notified, and on their Facebook page, it says too, if you're not going to recycle it, go ahead and put it in your household waste.
In other words, no glass recycling?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Thank you, Eddie. That's all, ma'am.
Is there anything else?
That's all I have.
Wait a minute. In my packet, I have our certificate of ordinance, what is this?
That is for the, whatever's before it.
The fire truck?
Yes.
So what is this? Is this part of this?
It was provided by the attorney.
I guess I've never seen one before. It's a what?
At least financing ordinance that the lawn council prepared.
That's part of their form?
Okay.
Would they just get Jennifer to sign off that this ordinance was passed and complies?
Okay, that's all we have, is there a motion to adjourn, or do you have anything else?
Mayor, however, we've got time, would it be appropriate, and is there interest in going back to Agenda Item 2B? If there's any further discussion, anyone, or enough for today?
Do you have, do you have something?
Not, not really, I'm just, you know, we've got time, if there's anything else that anybody might want to say.
Not, I'm, not your motion?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there second? All in favor of adjourned? Meeting's adjourned. Thank y'all, we'll see you at the council meeting.